We asked all participants to turn down any volume that they may have in the background like your YouTube. If you're, but I don't think we're gonna have any of that tonight, so. With that, Ernie, it's all yours.
Okay, good evening. This will be the planning commission. Uh, meeting for Wednesday, May 6th. I'm gonna call it order. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. And a moment of silence for firefighters and soldiers and policemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God. A moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you very much. Will anybody be recording this meeting?
It is being livestreamed via YouTube.
It will be, yeah, it'll be available too, so.
Okay. Reviewing the tracking log, I don't see, uh, first I want to thank everyone for getting on and I know it's a little troublesome with the. Live meeting, but I think our lives are all changing a little bit, so we'll move forward. Uh, looking at the tracking log, Mark, I think alls we have is, uh, what we have on the agenda tonight. Is that true?
That's correct. Just the Synthes USA.
Okay.
Land development application.
Okay. Is there any? Public comment on non-agenda items?
No.
Okay, is that everyone's choosing?
Yes, yes. Um, the only, Michelle Troits here is not, um, as a board of supervisor public. So, just so you know, I'm not sure if you can see that.
I understand. Okay, uh, for the, uh, March meetings, any comments on the March meeting minutes, please?
No comments from me, Ernie.
Okay.
No comments from me.
John?
Um, I'll abstain because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, Mark?
I, no, no comments. I wasn't at the meeting, but they, they'll find me.
Okay, Ed?
No, no comments from me, Ernie.
And I think, uh, Mike, did I hear Mike?
Yeah, I'm good with them, Ernie.
Okay, I have one comment and that'll, that's on the third page, line three. Where it said, Ernie closed the discussion, asking that Mark goes and will have a solicitor. As you reach out, the solicitor review the ordinance and the subdivision and land development. In addition, the, uh, staff will check the properties that could be impacted. Mark, you make sure those comments are put in?
Yeah, I'll look at that. Uh, so it was third page, line three, you said?
Yeah. Yeah, we, you said, you said have the solicitor look at this. We really should be have a solicitor look at, look at and review.
Okay.
The ordinance and the subdivision and land development. And then your staff was going to check the properties that could be impacted.
I will.
Other than that, I have no other. No other comments. It means it'll be a meeting minutes approved. Okay, we have one subdivision and land development application for Synthes USA at thirteen oh three Goshen Parkway. For land development. Has everyone had a chance to review the package?
Yes.
And, um, Mark, I believe we're gonna get someone to present to us. Is that what we have the folks on for?
Right, so we have, uh. And their, their group here tonight, um. And Brendan Burke, their attorney, is on board. Brendan, you're gonna be, uh. Giving us a little breakdown here of.
Hey, I, I am indeed. Uh, hello everyone, I'm Brendan Burke. I'm a Westchester attorney representing the applicant. Um, have represented the applicant in some prior proceedings before the commission and township before. Um, as you can see, there's a pretty large group, so I'm gonna do the best I can to, uh, avoid repetition here. We will have, um, just a moment, a slideshow presentation that will hopefully make it very easy for everyone to follow along. One of the architect team, Josh Vanderveen, will be, will be putting up some slides, but as Mark indicated. This is, um, a building expansion for what's commonly known as the Brandywine Plant, you know, the thirteen oh three Goshen Parkway. Location. It's a nineteen hundred square foot addition, give or take, to the existing facility there. Currently, J-bill in conjunction with, uh, the Dupuy Synthes companies of Johnson and Johnson. There'll be a little organizational chart, very briefly, to let you know who's who. As I said, it's a nineteen hundred foot, um, expansion to the existing structure with some sidewalk access, stairs. There'll be relocation of some utilities, um, and some stormwater sanitary sewer. And other utility changes that you might expect. Uh, the, the proposed expansion is a modest one in terms of size and scope. And it's really intended by the applicant simply to update and modernize the current operations that are there already. We, uh, and by me, we, I mean the project team and engineers and architects have filed the land development application. Taking both preliminary and final land development approval. Now, I helped very early in that process and I read a postmark on the website. Explaining that without, uh, without the benefit of your township, um, staff and consultant review letters. You'll be sure to ask for a recommendation this evening, so we won't be doing that. But we are going to give you a very good overview of what to take place. Um, it's a very low impact improvement. There really shouldn't be any change in township resources. Um, there will be no additional headcount of employees there. There will be no additional traffic as a result. There will be a few waivers requested by supervisors, one of which is, uh, for a traffic impact study because there won't be any change. Um, a water study will not be required because there will be no new water service. And something beyond my technical understanding, which deals with diameter of interior pipe size. Uh, is being asked as a waiver, which our technical team will, uh, will explain to you. So I think the best thing I should do at this point is, uh, um, just introduce the people who will be speaking tonight, of course. Hopefully, uh, there won't be too much from me, but Dave Citro for mainstay engineering is the project engineer. And Dave is the one who prepared the plans, the zoning tables and the improvements. From J-bill, we have Todd McVoy, who is a lead manufacturing engineer. And Ryan Freeze, who's a facilities and maintenance manager. Architects is, uh, John's Root Architects and John Nielsen, the project manager. And Josh Vanderveen, who I mentioned earlier, who's the project architect are here. And also on board is, um, William Riker from, uh, Johnson and Johnson. He's a facilities engineer. So I think at this stage, the best thing to do would be, um, allow people to either introduce themselves briefly. Or we can start a slide presentation that will hopefully expedite moving through this as efficiently as possible.
Unless someone else wants to go, why don't you just go ahead and start the slide presentation?
All right.
Josh, is it possible for you to share your screen?
Yep, I'm here. Um, let me get that started.
What is Josh's last name? That's the one I missed.
Uh, Josh Vanderveen.
Thank, I got it, thank you.
Yeah, but guess I gotta write all these down.
All right, let me know if you can see my screen.
I can see.
Yeah, got it.
All right, just to start off, I wanted to show, this is basically the layout that, um, that was just described. But, yeah, a number of these people are on the phone today. I think Dave Citro is probably gonna do a majority of the talking as we go through all of this. Um, but I know Todd McVoy is on the line as well and he can speak a little bit more to who J-bill is and, uh, what they'll be doing in this edition. Todd, are you in line?
Yep, I'm here. Uh, if you wanna go on to the next slide, yep. So, um, I think probably most people on the call are familiar with us. Um, we're a medical device manufacturer. Uh, Synthes built our facility in nineteen ninety-six, so we've been there continuously manufacturing since then. At some point between nineteen ninety-six and the present, I, I think it was about six or seven years ago, uh, we merged with Dupuy and became Dupuy Synthes. And then last year, um, Dupuy Synthes and Johnson and Johnson entered into an agreement with, uh, a company called J-bill. Um, so we're now actually, uh, part of J-bill Healthcare as a tenant and then contract manufacturer, uh, to Johnson and Johnson and Dupuy Synthes. That's just since last year. Um, we have about two hundred and fifty employees on site. Um, as Brendan mentioned, we, we have no plans to increase workforce based on this expansion. Um, and essentially, as he said, it's basically just updating and modernizing some of our existing metal finishing operations.
All right.
That, uh, I think that takes us essentially to the, the civil engineering part of the program. Mark, if it's okay with you, we'd like to start that for the, for the planning commission members. And I have, uh, I, I've asked Dave Citro to sort of prepare a bit of a narrative, so it's not so much back and forth. Um, obviously, this is just a, a meeting, it's not a, a record hearing, so. We won't be qualifying Dave as an expert or anything along those lines. We know he's a professional engineer. And he's the project engineer for this project. So what I've asked, uh, Dave to do is highlight some, um, existing additions. Um, the proposed improvements. We'll also have some overheads and slides that will show what the, uh, what the building will look like when it's literally dropped into the. The site and Dave will be able to go through, you know, the, the, uh, the zoning table, the calculations. And also sort of the necessary touch points with regard to what's gonna be added, what won't be added. And what we'll need to do, uh, in terms of compliance with the ordinance. So with that, um, Dave could.
Could I just, could I just jump in from there, Brendan? Uh, it's just a question for Todd, uh, and maybe, I just didn't see it written down. What, what is this addition going to be used for?
It's, uh, it's gonna be used for our metal finishing operations, so it's gonna be the same processes that we have today. Uh, but the space that we use today for those operations, um, is getting on the older side. Uh, this is gonna be slightly larger and just a, a more, uh, updated, uh, layout for those same processes.
So it's basically more, uh, just for the shop floor?
Uh, basically, yeah. It'll be, there'll be some wet finishing, some cleaning done in that space.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Brendan, I'm sorry.
No, I should probably highlighted that earlier.
I could jump in just real quick and a question. During the conditional use, there was discussion about this being, uh, a storage area for. Certain amounts of, um, fluids, cutting fluids and the oils and stuff. Is that still the case?
No, that's, that's not being, there's not gonna be that shed and there's not gonna be that storage, I believe. So I, I know we had a lot of back and forth about that three years ago, um, but, uh, I, I'll let Dave roll through. Going to, and then they can talk about, if Todd needs to jump in with regard to exactly what's happening there. But, uh, I do recall, you know, what we talked about back then, Mark, where there was some, there were some fluids that were being stored above, above ground inside. They wanted to move outside and that was an issue, but I don't think that's an issue here with this, uh, with this, this project. All right, Dave, are you, uh, are you, uh, available, Dave?
I think so. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right. So I did, I prepared some remarks here, uh, just to make this a little bit easier, especially for people who may be listening in on the phone. I'll do my best to, uh, describe what, what appears on the screen rather than just, you know, note what's on the screen. So I'll get right into it and, uh. Uh, so our subject property, as Brendan mentioned, is located at thirteen oh three Goshen Parkway on the northern side of Goshen, east of Airport Road. Uh, and it is northeast of the Brandywine Airport runway. Uh, the property is zoned I-one industrial. It sits on eight point six acres. Uh, as we've mentioned now, an application for the property appeared before the township in twenty seventeen for conditional use. To permit up to sixty percent impervious coverage on the property. That application was eventually granted. The property is largely developed and consists of parking and driveway areas, walkways, landscaping and an existing masonry building measuring sixty-two thousand square foot in footprint area. The existing building is home to a production manufacturing facility. Several mature trees line the western property line and also populate the existing parking areas. While stormwater management areas, including a large naturalized stormwater management basin, exist in the northern and northeastern portions of the property. The existing trees and existing building height meet the elevation slope requirements set forth by West Goshen Township's code as it pertains to the runway elevation. And all proposed conditions meet that same criteria. The application before you seeks to add a finishing room addition of approximately nineteen hundred square foot in footprint area for the manufacturing space. Included in this application, to support the building addition, we are proposing some utility infrastructure relocation. As well as the extension of an equipment pad to house new mechanical HVAC equipment. The proposed addition will not cause an increase in, uh, employee headcount at the facility. The application is prepared in conformance with the twenty seventeen conditional use approval. With proposal, uh, proposed conditions remaining below the sixty percent maximum allowable impervious area coverage. Proposed condition is at fifty-five point seven three percent. The property in its existing and proposed conditions also meet all of the area and bulk requirements of the I-one industrial district. Considering that twenty seventeen conditional use approval for the maximum impervious coverage. So what I'd like to do now is briefly look through a few plan excerpts to demonstrate the extent of our application. On our first, uh, site-related slide, which is, for those who are not looking at the computer, it is, it's the second sheet of our plan set, C zero dot one one. Uh, what we've done for you is include a copy of the twenty seventeen conditional use plan in the plan set that was submitted to the township. Uh, the inclusion of this plan where on the slide that we have, we have annotated, uh, the proposed improvements that we were showing in twenty seventeen. Uh, and we included this slide to, and, and sheet to, uh, provide the township with a reference point and a reminder of that conditional use approval. Uh, our next slide, uh, is page three of our, uh, plan set, C zero dot one two. Uh, this is the proposed land development plan. Uh, this plan shows an overview of the entire property with the proposed conditions. On the slide, we've annotated areas and improvements with the building addition highlighted in red.
I'm sorry, can I just stop you real quick for one, with one question?
Sure.
Previous sheet, which was C zero dot one one, that was the conditional use that was submitted for in, or in twenty seventeen then, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Back.
So we, we included this plan just as a reference, just as a reference. So C dot, uh, C zero dot one two is what we're currently proposing.
Okay, so all the future equipment pads, they're not included in this?
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, continuing on, we also want to briefly show some blow-up views of the engineering drawings that we demonstrate on the site improvements plan. It would be, uh, C three dot zero one or page six of the plan set. Uh, this shows the building addition dimensions as well as a egress walkway and the, uh, equipment pad extension. On the slide in the upper right, I've highlighted an area in yellow. That is the, uh, the lower end of the existing naturalized stormwater management basin. Uh, continuing on to our next sheet, uh, this is our site utilities plan, page eight, C three dot two one. To complete this building addition, some utility infrastructure revisions are required. Though it should be noted that these relocations and revisions will have no impact to any other property. It's all contained on the thirteen oh three property. In the upper right corner of the slide, I know the area in green, uh, to meet the township's stormwater management requirements, we will be making some grading revisions to the existing basin to add some volume. Uh, the red line that you see zigzagging through the slide, uh, that is the conveyance pipe where we're collecting roof drainage. From the, the proposed building addition as well as some areas of the existing building. So we're conveying those directly to the basin. And then lastly, uh, show the, uh, landscape improvements, which is page eleven of the, of the plan set, C five dot zero one. Uh, we are proposing some landscaping, uh, to, to enhance the area and, and provide a little bit of, of buffering. Uh, we're including a mixture of Leyland Cypress Evergreens, Japanese Zalkova shade trees. And a few U shrubs that are located at the northern end of the pedestrian egress walkway. So that's, that's the end of the, the slide presentation. Um, as Brendan mentioned, we do have, uh, three waivers that we are seeking. Uh, we are seeking waiver from section two oh five dash four zero for a water study as there are no new connections or water services to the facility. Uh, two oh five dot three nine for a traffic impact study, uh, there's no change in the headcount of the, of the, um, the facility. And then as, as Brendan mentioned, the technical one, two oh five dash three seven C dot seven, it's related to the minimum diameter of stormwater pipe sizes. Uh, we're seeking to allow a, a smaller pipe size since the, uh, the only, the only conveyance line that we have is that roof drain collection system. Um, it's collecting, it's only collecting certain areas of the roof drains. It's all internal to the site and discharges directly to the basin. And there is no public connections to the, to the stormwater system. Uh, additionally, just a few other points I'd like to, to make, uh, there's no expected increase in off-site noise, uh, no additional loading areas. And, uh, there'll be just so, some minor lighting, uh, that's gonna appear along the walkway, that egress walkway, uh, mostly for safety reasons. It's at the egress door and along that walkway, so there's not gonna be any, any light shining on anybody else's property.
Those lights, uh, a, a standard, uh, walkway light or is it a, a taller?
So we're, 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 we're going to be proposing, um, I think it's, uh, we're gonna be proposing a light baller, so that'll be a walkway light.
Perfect.
Okay, is that all you have, Dave?
That's all I have, yes.
To present.
I'm sorry, one of the, one of the things we wanted to, to, to do was give an overview. We realized this is a, you know, uh, a, a very scant overview. We're, we're completely prepared to answer questions tonight. Simply because, as you see, the project is, is completely engineered out and sort of ready to go. But we're also acutely aware that, that you as the, as the planning commission don't have the benefit of your review letters and, you know, consultant reviews as well. Um, we didn't, you know, I sort of gave Dave the entirety of our colloquy back and forth and he did a nice job, we're touching on it. But, you know, we don't see any, any, you know, issues with regard to variances. It looks like our area in bulk or those zoning tables, it looks like it's gonna be clean, so we don't see any issues there. With regard to the character of the neighborhood, sort of those, you know, we know where we are, the plant we're in. You'll see, there is an overhead that shows, a slide that shows, um, sort of what the building superimposed in this location will look like. And we can give you that slide in just a minute, but we don't really see a whole lot of, um, of issues that are gonna require any zoning help. We think it's a fairly clean plan, but of course, we're gonna understand you're gonna have questions and, and, and concerns as you get some, some feedback from your consultants. But, you know, the typical, we're not using any sort of township additional resources, no police and fire stuff we have going on. The, the adding no, uh, the adding no employees makes it a little easier in terms of traffic. There's nothing to do with that. Um, and sort of the essential character of the neighborhood, health and safety, welfare, there's really not any change. As, as Todd McVoy said a little earlier, it's really just an updating and continuation of, of what's already happening there. And creating a little additional space to the rear of the building. I don't see a, a whole lot of different operational. Changes, and if there were, of course, Todd could address those if you had those questions. So we wanted to sort of keep it short and sweet tonight, and that's where we left it. Um, if Josh could, could put up the slide that shows the drop-in of the, uh, what the building will look like on site, there it is. That's very helpful. Um, I think that gives a fairly good view of, you know, of what it will look like and you'll see. Compared to the existing structure, we're not talking about a massive, uh, a massive addition here.
Yeah, we're trying to hold the materials as close to the existing conditions as possible, so matching all the same brick, the same, uh, window storefronts. And, uh, trying to match the aesthetics as best as we can. When we had our township meeting earlier in the year, uh, we came away with the. Or obscurity sort of roof, um, mechanical equipment. So it should be.
Sorry, are you cutting out or are you just stopping?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, must've cut out a little bit there. Yeah, I was just saying that we were in, um, we're also installing a brick carapet to obscure mechanical equipment above on the rooftop that we'll be installing as well. So from the road, the road, it should be, this is our approximation of, you know, how, it's, it's fairly far from the nearest road. So it's hard to see exactly from there, but that's, that's what we're trying to do.
So Brendan, um, what I'd like, I think you showed us pretty much most of what you want to show, so I'm not correct, am I not? Am I incorrect?
Unless, unless anyone else on the, on the project team wants to, just to fill in whether we're ready for questions.
What, what I'd like to do, um, is give the planning commission a chance to answer some questions. And that way, uh, when we do get up and get the review and it comes back, it should be a lot easier. If most of our questions can be answered at this point, or, or at least you'll know what would, what we might be asking in the future. So, um, with that, I have one question for Mark before I open up to the, to the, uh, planning commission. Mark, um, the conditional use, was that just to cover the increase in impervious coverage or is that what that was?
Right, so that was the, uh, requirement that they, uh, were coming into. Because they're made to go above fifty-five. It's permitted in that district to go to sixty, and that's what they were asking for.
That was a conditional use?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I'll open it up to the planning commission. And just to keep it order, I'm just gonna go down the list so that we don't talk over each other. I'll start out with, uh, Mike, do you have any questions?
Yeah, can you hear me all right, Ernie?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mike Pagnol, what, Mike P, I'm sorry.
Uh, it's the other Mike then. I'll, I'll wait.
No question from me. No question from me right now. All right, how about Mike Coza?
Yeah, I think they, I think he touched on this. I was just curious, looking at the drawings briefly. The infrastructure, like the underground infrastructure improvements, um, where you're tying in, um, some new, um, store, underground storm to the existing building. Is that just because of the imperv, the new impervious calculations and, and the new detention pond and everything like?
Yeah, so there, there's two, there, we're, we're kind of hitting it from two different angles. Number one is, we are collecting the entirety of the roof of the new building addition. And directing that over to the stormwater basin. We also have a, um, an intermediate, um, seepage pit to, to also help us get through some of the ordinance requirements. But also, um, as, as a little bit of a, a more maybe, uh, of a, uh, an owner-driven request, uh, to help out with some maintenance. We are, uh, collecting, um, some of the roof drains off of the existing building, which currently spill degrade. Um, so we're just trying to tie that all into the same system. It ultimately gets to the basin anyway, so we're just trying to, to, to create a situation where, where there's not, um. Any downspouts that are, that are just spilling out, um, onto the, onto the lawn. Um, that, that could cause any kind of maintenance issues, so.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Is, is in like the duck bank and, and all that infrastructure, is that just because it's in the way of the new addition or is there some upgrades?
Yes, we just have to get it around, yep.
Okay, um, yeah, that's kind of where I was at with it for now. I know, um, there's more to come, but thanks.
Ed Dekker?
Ernie, I, I think Mike, uh, asked the one other question that I had, um, in addition to, you know, the clarification on the twenty seventeen. Um, conditional use, so I think I'm good right now. Thank you.
Okay, Mark Levy?
Uh, yeah, I, thanks, Ernie, and I apologize that I, I'm not on, uh, for the visual part of this, but. My only, uh, question, uh, you know, to, to you folks, to, to J-bill is. What, what are you guys actually doing, um, in this facility and, in terms of the finishing of a product? You know, I, just by, by curiosity, I asked what kind of materials you're using and, and things like that. I, I guess, you know, I understand what Dupuy Synthes does, but. It, can you advise us, like, what are you actually, what products are you actually finishing or will be in that facility?
Sure, I can cover that. This is Todd McVoy. Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Uh, yeah, so I can answer that. This is Todd McVoy with J-bill. Um, so in the facility, we make, um, instruments, well. External fixation devices and spine implants, uh, primarily out of stainless steel and titanium-based materials. And so the finishing that we do for metal is typically cleaning, polishing and then coloring for titanium. Uh, so that's sort of the, the, the high level view of what we do. Um, and it's the polishing, uh, cleaning and coloring that we'll be doing in this new space. Uh, but again, we don't have any new processes that we're planning on implementing for that. It's just gonna be moving existing processes into the new space. Uh, and just kind of updating the facility.
Do you type that? No, I appreciate that. So like from a, from a, the standpoint of, uh, air quality, uh, cleaning. You, you guys are, have that engineered into the building, at least presently as the new design? I understand you're moving equipment, but I assume you'll be bringing more equipment into larger facility?
We, we will, but we'll be then decommissioning the older equipment, so i- in effect, uh, the utility usage and so on will be essentially the same. Before and after, uh, once the new room is up and running. Uh, but at this point, we don't anticipate any, uh, changes like to an air quality permit or anything, anything at all like that. Because, uh, overall, it's not gonna be a, a change to our operations.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Mark, I just kind of noticed that my internet's unstable. I don't know if it's tied to this power stuff. Mark, I just kind of noticed that my internet's unstable. I'm always tied to this power stuff. If I do fall off, John's on, you can continue, and I'll try and call him on the telephone. But I just, you know, just have to work around it. But right now, it's working. John, any comments?
Yeah, it's just one, the roof mounted equipment, what is that going to be?
We have a one air handling unit and two fans that are going to be serving the new space that we're installing. So they're dedicated specifically to this addition.
Okay. And I noticed before you had a exit way that ended that you're going to be relocating to the back. Well, is that for fire exit?
Yes, yeah, it's an emergency exit, so we have to maintain exit paths through the building and out of this new addition as well.
So your new egress path will pass, for the rest of the building will pass for this new addition then?
No, well, we, we have adjacent exterior doors that we're able to hit without exceeding our max egress distances in the building.
Okay.
Any other questions, Sean?
And then just one other one for, on Plan Page CO.11, we have the retention basin. You had mentioned on there about removing existing sediment. Is that from before when you were going through the prior approval, or is that currently?
C dot O one, C O dot one one is from the 2017 application. The note to remove sediment, that it will be part of our post-construction stormwater management plan for this application as well.
Okay.
That's, that's a maintenance issue in a, in a way to improve water quality.
So I was just trying to get to that. You have a regular maintenance schedule?
Yeah, there, there's, there will be a, there's always going to be a maintenance schedule for the, for the basins, yeah.
Okay, that's the only questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I got just a couple of questions. The is this, is this a two-story building? Is this a two-story addition, or is this just one story?
It's, it's technically one story. We, we have a mezzanine above it, but it doesn't, it doesn't qualify as a full second floor. But there's, there's a mezzanine above for mechanical equipment and some storage.
Okay. And with regard to the waivers, I'm sure that, Mark, you're going to have to review these, I'm sure. I understand the water, I understand the traffic. Is there any type of impact or hardship with putting in the 15-inch pipe? Or is it just that it's not needed?
So from a technical standpoint, a 15-inch pipe would be oversized for what we're collecting. Especially considering the amount of elevation drop that we have in getting from our, our point of collection to our point of discharge. So we're, we're making, we're making this waiver request as a matter of efficiency.
I guess my question is, as a matter of efficiency, if you, are you laying new pipe anyway?
Well, this is, that's the only pipe that we're laying.
Okay, so you got to dig, you got to, I don't know how you do it. I'm sure you assume you got to dig a ditch or something and lay a six-inch pipe. And I guess my question is, is there some hardship to put in the 15-inch other than being oversized? Does it, does it impact anything?
I would, I would be lying if I told you there was, there was a, like, a lack of space. But no, it's just, just, we're trying to, to provide the most efficient design as possible.
Okay. What's, is the, the current piping installed, is that 15-inch? Or is this new piping?
So current, current piping throughout the site actually varies. There are, there are areas on site that do have pipes of smaller diameter. There's a, I, I do know of one that's, that's near the, the existing equipment pad. That's actually just a, it's either a four or six-inch PVC pipe.
So Mark, I assume you folks will look into that, right?
Yeah, technically, I mean, the 15-inch requirement is typically for stormwater collection in parking lots and that type of thing. Nate and I already talked briefly about it, and he was going to look at it. So we'll definitely hit this with the township engineer.
Okay. That was all the questions I had. I think you heard all the questions from our planning commission. I don't have any further questions. Does anybody else have any further questions?
I do. Michelle, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Michelle.
Okay, so first of all, thank you for such a comprehensive plan. This is, it was, I, I went up to look at the site with one of the other supervisors on Monday. The only questions I have, a simple question, do you have any clue what the projection is, how long the construction would take? Hello?
Yeah, we hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That might be a question for Todd.
Yeah, okay, sure. Sorry, I was, I was waiting to see if John might weigh in, but no problem at all. Yep, so I may think we're projecting about eight to nine months of, of construction.
Eight to nine months, that's pretty long, okay. And then, so regarding the construction, there is a farmhouse right next door, so you do have neighbors. Are there going to be any barriers that you're going to be putting up for sound and dust and dirt?
Not required.
Not required?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then the other question I have is regarding the chemicals. Now, these chemicals are already in use in this building. So is this addition supposed to make the building safer because the chemicals will be located in a, a better, well, more well-suited location?
Uh, yes.
Or is it just for ease of construction? Like, is it just for ease of, like, the manufacturing is what I meant to say?
Well, both. There, there is, there are going to be infrastructure improvements as part of this, which are kind of coming along with the, the upgrade to our, to our processes that we're going to be operating.
Okay.
And then, I don't know if you want to add it to that, Josh?
I mean, that's, that's essentially right. We're, we're not adding to what's existing. And I think part of the addition is also to maintain existing operations during construction. So that once construction completes, those operations can pick up sooner while the existing operations then break down, if that makes sense. So there's not a lull in manufacturing.
Yep.
Okay, and what is the, like, what is the quantity of these liquids? Are we looking at 55 drums of various chemicals? Are these explosive? Are they flammable? What's the flashpoint?
No, there's nothing flammable, there's nothing explosive. And no, it's not nearly that volume. It's, I, I don't have the exact number of drums in, but it's more like 15 drums, more, more on that order.
Okay, so these are not gigantic 55-gallon drums of a highly volatile chemical?
There are some 55-gallon drums typically of, of an acid, not, not an explosive, not flammable, so.
Just, oh, so you, so you're using corrosives because you're cleaning the metals?
Right, yep.
Okay, all right. And guess that was pretty much what I wanted to know. So the projection is it would take about eight to nine months. And there won't be any, at this point, any barrier because it's not a requirement. Okay, I think that that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this time, the township, we haven't received review comments from the engineer or the county planning commission. The meeting was really to primarily provide a planning commission overview of the plan and answering any general questions. And the township engineer, the conservancy, conservancy board, and the Chester County Planning Commission all need to review the plan and forward comments. This being the first presentation for the application, it's a premature to forward any recommendation to the board at this time. I do appreciate the folks that got on and provided us the information. And I guess we'll move forward from there and have it passed on to the other areas that need to be looked at. And then I assume we'll see this again.
So, Ernie, I just have a few staff questions. While we have all their experts.
I'm sorry.
No, I wanted everyone to weigh in first and not step on any toes, but, so. But there was a lot of talk during the concert, during the conditional use about the parking lots. Those are obviously not on this plan at this time. Does City's have a plan for phasing in those parking? Is it despite the need? I can see in the tabulation that it doesn't appear so.
Yeah, at this point, we don't foresee a need for additional parking.
Okay. How about the new walkways and gathering areas and those other types of hardscaped amenities?
So the only walkway is the egress walkway from the finishing room to the parking lot.
Okay. This is in the approach cone of the, of the airport. Have you submitted this for FAA approval?
We have not submitted for FAA approval, but we have provided the calculations of, of the elevation requirements. They, they appear on drawing C O dot one two. And, you know, we'll, we'll make the necessary submissions, but we don't foresee there being any concerns as everything is, is well within the, the limits.
I'm not familiar with the turnaround on those times. I know when we did, we did a a recent cellular tower out on Goshen Parkway, and it took some time to get them to review. So your best to get that in as quickly as you can.
We'll make sure that happens.
Your waivers, I think they, they all make total sense. But I think the board is, and the planning commission needs to make a recommendation to the board, and we need to see written justification of those. So just a probably a couple sentences for each of why for your justifications. Just a quick, a couple more here as I find them. I see the rooftop screening at the view. I mean, it looks like it's on three sides. You may want to familiarize yourself with the code. It has to be screened on all four sides. And there was some mention about upgrades and changes in the rest of the facility. Expand on that just a little bit.
I, I think you may be referring to what Josh was saying about running briefly, parallel operations as we're transitioning to the new space. But beyond that, we actually don't have a concrete plan yet for repurposing the existing space. I think we, we tend to think that we're going to remove the room that's there and then have it available for manufacturing that matches all the other manufacturing we do in the facility.
So this is a, this is a new room. So I'm not sure what I mean, what you mean by remove the room that's there.
Well, the, so we have an existing finishing room. This is going to replace the operations of that, but that's all, that's an all internal space, so.
The basin grading, I see it's shown on the landscape plan. Don't recall, it's, it's not shown. Unless, unless it is, but it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's on the site grading plan as well, C three dot one one.
Yeah, sorry, went by that one too quick. Okay, those are my questions, Ernie.
Okay, any other questions? All right, well, gentlemen, I appreciate your time. Thank you for the presentation. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or I think you can go ahead and cancel out. We have a few more things to go through. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time. We'll let you get to your other, your other matters. And I suppose just from a logistical standpoint, Mark, the best thing to do would of course be, once we have the review letters, it seems like the next meeting before the commission would be, would be simply address the comments from staff and consultants and review letters. And to finally FAA thing, so as soon as this is practical, I suppose, after the review letters come out to let us prepare our response, it sounds like we'd be good to go again, to come before you as a commission again, and answer those questions, any subsequent questions you may have, the issues raised by staff and consultants.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think with the, you know, with the completeness of your plan here, this is going to be quickly turned around. I can't imagine that we won't be able to get comments, you guys be able to address any of those comments quickly. I would also ask you to, to review the conditional use decision. There were some comments in the, there were some conditions of that that are, that the engineer will be considering. So take a look at that. I mean, we can talk about those if we want. I have them available. They were in the packet as well, but they're pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I, I have those from, from 2017. We have the benefit of having sort of the same team together. I know there's a new commission, some new supervisors, but we'll be able to, to tell those in here, Mark. Thank you.
Okay, I will touch base with Nate. He's had the plans for a week. I got him to him the day after I picked him up. So I'll check with him and see if he has any questions. If we need to touch base directly with, with Dave, we'll, we'll do that to expedite this. Because it is pretty, pretty straightforward if, if the chairman agrees.
Yes, I do.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, next thing we have on the agenda, there's no conditional use of variances. We've just gone through. No ordinance amendments. The next thing we have on the agenda is zoning ordinance review. I know we had discussed this the last time we were together in the March meeting. I know we got different areas that we're looking at for potential improvements in that. My suggestion is, I think it's a little difficult to discuss over a conference call like this. I want to just defer that and, and let you folks still, you know, accumulate your ideas. And we can get together and see if we need a, a working meeting or something like on that. So I'm going to defer that for now. That's okay with everyone. And the next thing is the review model ordinance for the pipeline. And Mark, I wonder if you could just give us an update, because I know we had asked for this solicitor to take a look at the two ordinances to refresh the memory. There was, hold on one second.
Mark, I just wanted to let you know Ruth did join us. I don't know if you can see that on your screen.
I saw her, I saw her. Hello, Ruth.
Okay, sorry, Mark.
They're okay. I got it.
Okay.
If you remember, there was two submissions for potential ordinances. One was an ordinance and one was a subdivision in land development. Mark, we'd ask you to do some research with the solicitor and also with your staff. I don't know where you stand on that. Maybe you could give us a little, a little update.
Absolutely. I did, and ran this by Kristen right after your last meeting. And of course, you know, our world went kind of hectic. So we discussed it again and kind of put it on the back burner. But we did speak today, and she's formalizing her comments after refreshing her memory on this one. And I have a bunch of red line comments that we talked about today on the telephone. But I asked her to, to put them down in, in a real kind of organized fashion, because she had a lot of really good things on both ordinances to, to really discuss. I think you'll find that, you know, she brings up some really good points and some of the same ones that you guys had at our last session. So on top of that, we also had, I've been working on during this whole process. I've had a, our GIS consultant and our intern, who's a master student from Westchester. And she's got a minor in GIS, so. And she's got a minor in GIS. So we've been working on a pipeline integrated map that we can use as a tool. So she just got that finished and got me a tutorial on it. But I haven't had a chance to master it, so I want to work on that a little bit. And I think it'll be a good discussion topic for June.
Okay, I'm good with that. All right, there's no new, so then we'll put this back on the agenda for June.
We'll do it.
Okay. And could I ask that when you get the solicitor's comments to a point where she's happy with them and submitted to you, it would make sense, could you send them out to the planning commission for us to take a look at?
Absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great. You can do that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll circulate them as soon as I get them so you have time to look through it. Yeah.
I appreciate that. Okay.
Yeah, another thing that we, I had forgotten and she had reminded me of. We did a public utilities facilities ordinance in 2015. If some, I don't know if any of you were around. And, and that captures a bunch of the things in the, in the surface land use trans ordinance. So I'm going to pop that one in your, in your inboxes as well, so you can take a look at that one.
Is that in the, is that in the zoning code?
It's, uh, yes, I believe it is.
Yeah, yeah, if you could send that out, I'd like to see that. I think we all would. Okay.
Mark?
Yes.
Hey, Mark, can I ask a quick question? That map that you guys are working on, is that going to be able to accomplish that overlay? That remember we had toyed with the idea of doing an overlay of open tracts of lands on that pipeline over map to see where future development could actually be impacted? Is that going to be able to do that?
I'm hoping that it will. Yes, it's interactive tool that I can zoom in and out, and it has parcel information, that stuff. Yeah, so it's linked to a bunch of county information as well as the, the pipeline information. Not a tool that I'm going to put out there as a, as a user tool for public. But it's something that we can definitely use internally when we have applications and that type of thing.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. I have no new business. Is there any other matters that any of the members would like to bring up? Okay, liaison report. I don't hear Marty on, Michelle, are you acting for the liaison? Or is it just Marty?
I think that that's probably just Marty. I can briefly update you and let you know that the park is open and it's been, they've opened bathrooms. And so far, so good is my understanding. Mark Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding, that was, that was good. We just, we're told that yard waste is going to be picked up starting on the 13th, beginning, then again on the 20th, and then go to the schedule as set forth in the notice. We know that the pipeline has started construction again. That's another new development. And I would say pretty much, I can't think of anything else that's really outstanding or pressing at this point. Mark, correct me.
I would, I would just add, you know, those are all spot on. I would just add that the staff did our soft opening today at the township building.
Oh, right.
With just staff, with all of our precautions here, you'll see that there's a lot of differences in the lobby when you come in. And we're going to continue to keep the building closed to the public until the 15th. We're following the, the county's lead on that as well as kind of the state. Right now, in this area of the state, as you all know, you know, it's, it's still, there's still some issues out there. So we are following the guidelines. We are back to work, though. Everyone's been working the whole time remotely. Thankfully, we have a very good server system here and the work remotely and work shift work or public works is still working, as you can see, and staying pretty busy. So the Pale Pike Trail is still on schedule to begin. Our contractor hopes to start, get their start date from PennDOT between, the time between May 15th and the first of June. We're, we had a, we had a pre-cockoff meeting and then COVID stuff started and, and that. Like Michelle's mentioned, all the parks are open except for the playgrounds. The active areas, obviously, they don't want any active sports, active team sports and that type of thing. But lots of people are recreating. The one day, there was probably over 500 people in, in the park. But yeah, it's, it's good. We're, we're hoping to get back to opening the building here on the 15th if all goes well.
I, I did think of one other thing, and that's Community Day, while it's been postponed from June, it's tentatively moved to the end of August, I believe the 29th, if I'm not mistaken. And there's, okay, there's discussion of that being combined with the food truck fest. So keep that in mind. That's going to be hopefully, but hopefully we'll be able to make that happen.
Yeah, the, the park and rec board are, are going to make a decision at their meeting in June. They, they really have to make a go, no-go at their June meeting because vendors have to know, we have to start spending money. We have to, we have to basically try and go get money, too, because we usually get 90 to 100% of the money from donations. So they work on that. And they need, they need some time to do that. But it's definitely, right now, it's definitely not a go. In June, it's going to be combined with the food truck festival in August. So hopefully, you know, in June, they'll be able to give it a green light and we'll get some stuff going in the park for the summer.
Okay, good. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. With that, does anyone want to make a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make it.
Make a motion, Mike Coza.
Second?
I'll second, John Stipe.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.